Good evening. We'll now reconvene to open session. The time is 7:15 PM. I want to thank you all for joining us here this evening. This is just a reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public, but they are not a meeting of the public. Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and to take action on recommendations of the superintendent. Board does receive the agenda ahead of time when all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present, so to maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disrupted behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, we will begin our ceremonials. Tonight, we have our colors are presented by Cape Park High School. That brings us to item 3E, our commendations and recognitions.
Thank you. As many of you know, people from across the nation, both near and far, reached out to UMBLE ISD asking how they could help us after learning about the devastation that Hurricane Harvey left behind. UMBLE ISD's community development office and education foundation continuously worked with hundreds of donors to accept monetary donations, thousands of backpacks full of school supplies, and unloaded multiple 18-wheeler truckloads of supplies. All for our students. Yeah? Education Foundation Communication Specialist will now play video that will be sent out. An email to each donor to say thank you on behalf of UMBLE ISD.
Water is now making its way inside people's homes.
Right now, as it stands, we are three feet above the flood stage.
The cleanup is underway or trying to get underway. This home is one of several that have collapsed.
We had to see families that came to us with literally nothing. Their whole lives had been washed away. Through this experience, we were able to provide them with so much and just show them how much we care about their, not only their students, but them, their families as well, and our neighbors, and it's just been a really life-changing experience for all of us.
This was about people helping people. This was no longer about a school district or even a community. This was just people who were in need and people from far and wide stepped up to help.
It was truly amazing to see so many people reach out to us to want to be a blessing to our students and to our families that were affected. We were inundated with so many donations, so many supplies, and people just wanting to pour into our schools and help us out here across UMBLE ISD.
All of the students really appreciate all that they've done for us, and I know all of the teachers too. We lost a lot in the flood, but with all these people helping us, it's just such a great blessing to see all the donations come in.
The fact that everyone just got together and donated to people they don't know, people that lost a lot, and you don't know if the person that donated lost, but they're still donating, is like amazing.
After helping each other out and these donations, we just, we got back into what we were before. The spirit and the happiness and all of just everything, and it's truly inspiring to see what we have done in the community and from the donations around the country. It's really great, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It really just made us feel so much better, and it just uplifted our spirits, feel better, and we're in the process of rebuilding our homes and stuff, and you helped a lot.
To say thank you is an understatement beyond belief, and it's a debt that I could never repay. Can't pay it back, so we're gonna have to pay it forward whenever we can, whenever we see a school or a community that has been impacted by whatever going forward, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay that forward and take care of them, just like these people have taken care of us.
I want to send a promise that every gift is seed sown on good ground. Every donation, every notebook, every marker, every glue stick is being used to ensure that our students have access and that our students are able to have opportunities.
Almost from the minute that Hurricane Harvey started impacting our schools and our community, we started receiving well wishes, thoughts, and donations from across the entire country. They say that your character is not revealed during the easiest of times, but during the most difficult. We saw incredible character and want to say thank you to all of you for supporting us during a very challenging time in our school district and across our community.
Thank you for keeping UMBLE ISD strong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for thinking of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping out.
Well, Thanksgiving is next week, and we sure have a lot to be thankful for. This Thursday, November 16th, we invite the entire UMBLE ISD community to wear your UMBLE ISD Strong t-shirt and show communities near and far how thankful we are for all of the support that they showed to us in response to Hurricane Harvey. Please share your photos on social media Thursday using hashtag #UMBLEISDThankful. So, and thank you Kiana too for that great video and all the support to all those donors out there who have been so incredible during a very difficult time. So, thanks everyone for that. Okay, next I'd like to invite Jerry Mon Barron to the podium for superstaffers.
UMBLE ISD employees go BBD on each day to meet with these students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in making Team UMBLE ISD great. Each month campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. The sponsor for this month's Superstaffer Awards is the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation, and joining us tonight from the foundation is their chair, Jen Sitten. Being honored as the elementary superstaffer tonight is Arnetta Minor from Groves Elementary. Joining Arnetta up front is Dr. Brian Peters, the principal from Groves Elementary, and while she makes her way, let me read a little bit about Arnetta. Arnetta has worked so hard to be intentional and connected with all students. In the cafeteria during breakfast, she takes the time to greet them, asks if she can assist them, shows interest in their conversation and their hobbies. I've never seen her walk around, walk in without anything but a smile, and that is just what those children need to see first thing in the morning. Arnetta fills many needs and roles at Groves, and she does it all with a positive impact Being honored as the secondary superstaffer tonight is Diana Aston, Campus IT for Kingwood Also joining Diana up here is Dr. Ted Landry, Principal of Kingwood High School. So, this is what they said about Diana. Diana has been working so hard to make sure our Kingwood High School teachers have the technology they need to function in a new setting. She never seems upset or flustered, even when several teachers are in need of her help at the same exact time. Because of her can-do attitude when it comes to fixing things, she keeps us calm when we want to panic. She has been a key asset in smoothing our transition to the Mustang South campus, and while responding to our pleas for help, she recognizes the learning opportunities in each situation to teach and mentor the student interns assigned to her. She has been doing all of this with a cheerful attitude, even though her own house flooded and her world is in chaos. Thank you, Diana. And then being honored as our support superstaffer tonight is Crystal Carter from Accounts Pable. Also joining Crystal here is her supervisor, Ginger Raymer. Come on up, Ginger. Crystal is a great asset to the financial services team. She achieves the mission and vision of UMBLE ISD by providing quality service to internal and external customers. She is always willing to help out others as needed, even if it does not necessarily fall under her job responsibilities. She's a positive team player for not only her department, but for the district. She shows a sincere interest in coworkers and lends support and guidance. She shows pride in her work with the attention she shows to detail and her proactive approach to identifying problems. These skills, along with her dependability and positive attitude, make her an asset to all that work with her.
Next, I would like to invite Sally Wagner, avid coordinator, forward to share some exciting news.
Good evening. I am Sally Wagner, and I am the UMBLE ISD avid coordinator. I have some very special people with me tonight that I would like to introduce, starting with Ken Buck, the principal of Timberwood Middle School. Elena Taylor, the avid coordinator and avid elective teacher at Timberwood Middle School. And Angela McDaniel, who is also the avid, an avid elective teacher at Timberwood Middle On October 25th, Avid visited Timberwood Middle School to revalidate them as an avid national demonstration school. You may remember, in 2014, they were our first avid national demonstration school. They came in, and it was a very, very long day, but I am happy to share with the board and our superintendent, and of course, everyone here and watching on TV, that they did revalidate as an avid national demonstration school. I would love at this point to have them unroll the banner, but Mr. Buck has already had that hung in his building. So, if you would like to see the banner, please drop by Timberwood at any time. I believe he's already hung the new one inside the building, but taken the old one and hung it on the outside, so he has got all of those areas covered. Currently, there are only 38 demo schools of the 1,200 avid schools in the state of Texas, so this is quite the accomplishment. Valonia did a fantastic job on the article that was on the website capturing the day, so I did want to say thank you to her. But one of the things that Avid said, that she did quote in the article, is that the students at Timberwood are forward-thinking, diligent, intentional in all subject areas. And I think that that truly does sum up the students at Timberwood Middle School. Avid went on to compliment the visible district support. I'd like to especially say thank you to Ms. Conrad and to Dr. Brown for coming and being part of what was a very long day. I do have to say that the young men at Timberwood Middle School were very happy to have our board president there, and they've asked several times when you were coming back. So, they, they were very excited to meet you. I'd also like to say just congratulations to the entire Timberwood faculty and staff. It is a huge accomplishment, really something that they've been working for, for the past three years since they got their very first banner. So, big congratulations. I'd like to say thank you to my amazing bosses, Lisa Pritchard and Henry Phipps, for allowing me to do what I do, but mostly I'd like to say thank you to y'all, to the board and our superintendent for continuing to support Avid for the past 11 years. Thank you so, so much, and congratulations. Thank you.
And finally, we will have a special presentation from Melissa Kreiser, our district energy manager. So, Melissa, please come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Brought reinforcements with me this evening. It's not my bodyguards or anything like that. UMBLE ISD is again proud to continue our partnership with CenterPoint Energy and Clear Result. The idea is very simple. See, the district installs energy-efficient equipment through construction or upgrades to more efficient equipment in existing facilities, and CenterPoint provides the district with incentives in order to pay for future projects. This year, by completing roof upgrades at Kingwood Park High School and the maintenance center, as well as major HVAC renovations and upgrades at Atascocita Middle School, and by installing energy-efficient chillers and lighting at our newest campus, Groves Elementary, we have earned $62,423.81. Thanks to everyone who helped us out, not just the guys who helped design those facilities, but to the guys behind the scenes, our HVAC supervisor, Zach Fade, Director of Maintenance and Operations, Kenny Kendrick, as well as Carol Courtney behind the scenes, helping us out. So, to date, UMBLE ISD has received over $460,000 since the beginning of our partnership with the SCORE program. So, tonight, we are joined by Drew Scatizzi with CenterPoint, as well as Josh Campbell with Clear Result, and they are here with one check. But we also have, we've been fortunate enough to participate in another program through CenterPoint called our Commercial Load Management Program, and this requires the district to basically reduce consumption during peak hours of our summer months, during the hottest times of our, of our year, in order to avoid blackouts and brownouts for our community. And in return for doing that, CenterPoint pays us incentives. This money, we turn around and again pay back into projects that help us to install more energy-efficient equipment in our buildings. So, to date, UMBLE ISD has received over $227,000 from that program, and tonight, Mr. Calvin Burnham with CenterPoint Energy is here to present us with another check for $43,612.18. So, I want to thank them for allowing us to participate in these programs and, and help us make our buildings more efficient.
All right, that brings us to item 3F. That'll be our public comments. Do we have any? Which we have none. Moving on to item 3G, comments by individual board members. I'll start to my left, Mr. Carney.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to say thank you on behalf of the board and other members, just from the community in general, from support. That, that video that we saw, the Inspiring Moments video, just to see how many people have really reached out to us with maybe no connection whatsoever to our community, it's just really, really inspiring. So, it's, it's just been really amazing to see how everybody's come together, so I really appreciate the support. I hope we can continue that, that positive momentum. I want to say congratulations to the superstaffers. You guys, day in and day out, represent us as a community very, very well. We really appreciate all of your efforts, good work. Wanted to say congratulations as well to Timberwood Middle School. Awesome what you guys are doing, appreciate, appreciate all you guys are doing with the Avid program. And then CenterPoint, so thank you for, for the, the check presentation as well, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Ms. Morrison?
I'll ditto Mr. Carney on all the, the special awards. Also, I want to thank all the schools for the veterans' presentations they've had over the past week. They were beautiful, very well representative. I just wish I could have gone to more of them, you know, but they all landed on the same, same day, but absolutely outstanding. The, the student participation, and I've never seen so many parents and veterans inside our school, and I just want to compliment that. And Ken Buck, way to go. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam President. First, let me just say, I want to, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, any veterans out there. I see you out there, Ted, and we've got two up here on the board member. There's my friend from the paper. Happy Veterans Day. Also, wanted to say congratulations also to Mr. Buck. Congratulations once again for a great achievement. I'm gonna shift gears a little bit and want to say congratulations to all my board members up here. We got involved with a group called Go Public, which is a group of all of the ISDs in Region Four, which is up to 52 if you count Harris County and Region Four. But this November, which is today, well, was just now, we have our first, it was a 30-second video clip, but it's a 15-second video clip. I was hoping to show it tonight, but technical difficulties, so we can't show it. But once again, Go Public is really heightening what public education is all about and what we're doing, and UMBLE ISD is a part of that. We will be involved with our presentation soon, but this is, this video clip is gonna be in all of the local theaters this November. And so, as you go and watch movies, you're gonna see a gentleman named Sylvester Turner basically describing what public education has done for him. And so, once again, I want to thank my board members for getting on board, proving that education, public education is, and it does matter, and we do change lives. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Sitten?
Yes, I'll be brief. I know that shocks y'all, but I want to congratulate the, the four out of our five comprehensive high schools for making the playoffs in football. All three 6A schools and one of our 5A schools, so they start this week. Want to also congratulate those that made the volleyball playoffs, and especially Kingwood Park Girls, who made it all the way to the regional finals this year. And then, I want to congratulate the athletic department. I don't see Mr. Kite here, but we had our first signing ceremony, and...
ASU person?
Dr. Fagan, do you know how many students?
I do not have the actual count.
I had, it seems like there was like 33, but don't quote me on that, please. We'll get that number from, from Coach Kite, but I think it was about, it was 31 or 33? 33? Ah, see, there we go. I'm not as dumb as I thought. So, 33 signed letters of intent this past week, and, you know, those are the things that, that we can be proud of. We know that education is a huge part, but one thing we get as board members, we get a, a grade report from the athletic department that looks at grades from all the kids that are, that are in athletics, and if we added all the kids that are involved in other extracurricular activities, you could really see the impact that an involved student has on their grades. I'm very proud of what our teachers, our coaches, and our sponsors do above and beyond their normal school day to make sure these kids have a true high school experience. Hasn't been a, a traditional year, as we know with, with Kingwood and Summer Creek, but those teachers have still done their part, those, those sponsors, those coaches, and they, both, both schools had kids that signed letters of intent as well. So, I want to thank you all for all the efforts molding our children, our students, in the manner that we're all proud of. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Mr. Lopez?
I'll be brief. You know, with Thanksgiving next week, I just want to thank the administration, both central administration, administration of schools, in particular, Kingwood High School, see Dr. Landry back there, and Brent McDonald and their, their teams for everything that we've had to go through over the last couple of months, and, you know, we're through it, we're through it, most of it. Hopefully, it'll, it will end on March 19th, which it looks like it's going to, to some degree. Kingwood's still gonna have to deal with some construction there. But all the work that you guys did, I really appreciate it. And as a son who was directly affected in Summer Creek High School, it's, it's been a, it really hasn't been that big of a deal to the kids, other than some of the commute times. But it's, it's, it's just amazing, the work and the, the, all of the effort that everyone has put into, to deal with the situation that we're in. So, thank you for that, and I'm also thankful that those teachers and administrators are gonna have next week off to take a break, because it is a hectic schedule that they have over there. But that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Ms. Dixon?
Well, I'd like to ditto what many of my fellow board members shared about the superstaffers. Congratulations. Also, congratulations to the teams that are in the playoffs. What a wonderful feat. Also, avid, I know people have already spoken about that, but avid is something that I've always, it's always been near and dear to my heart. I've seen what it can do in a, in a child's life in preparing them for college and getting them in that mindset. So, I wanted to take an opportunity to say congratulations to Timberwood Middle School. And I have a few comments. I had an opportunity to tour Kingwood High School today, but I'll save those comments to after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. And I'll just, I want to just add on to Mr. Sitten with the athletic accomplishments. I've seen those, as well as the fine arts, and I've had many parents, and just in the last few weeks, I think they've had region concerts and things like that. Having had attended those before, it is just phenomenal what those kids do, first of all, to make a region. all, to make a region or an area orchestra or other band or, but I know that they literally practice on their own and then they come together just for a weekend, maybe just two or three days. And then they present this concert at the end that's just amazing to attend. And I think coinciding with Veterans Day this year was especially moving because they had the presentations honoring the veterans. And so I've just gotten a lot of comments from parents about how wonderful the experience was, especially for first-time parents of members of the choir who made the region orchestra. So I just want to commend our fine arts as well. And there's just so many schools that are, I don't know what's more exciting, is to continue to achieve this great thing or to have those first-ever achievements. It's also exciting. So I just want to commend you for continuing to reach those goals, but also reaching for the new goals and finding new and better ways to connect our kids so that they're involved in their school. And then one thing I wanted to add on to the video, for me, I love, you know, how far-reaching it was, but there was one particular tweet that changed my perspective on, you know, everyone is helping us out, help us out, but to think that we could be an opportunity for other communities to learn, other schools to use our disaster to learn from. But there was a school, an Asian, a class from Asia, I don't even remember what school was, but they wrote letters to our students at one of our schools. And in the letters, they said "y'all." And I was like, how do they know about "y'all"? So they had to do all of this preparation to think, how would they write this letter to this Texas schoolchildren? And I was just impressed that they used "y'all." And so it made me think, oh, this is great for them to learn about our community too. So I just thought that was pretty awesome. One final thing, I did want to just commend the, our public information department. I know beyond just responding to normal things, this has just been above and beyond and constant. It's not something that has, we have, we've completed this, we'll move on. It just continues to go on and on. And so I know what a hardship this has been on public information. I think you guys have done a great job of not only responding to these, but responding to our requests and the community's requests when they have told you what they need to hear and things like that too. So I just wanted to say that publicly. We appreciate your hard work. You're everywhere. You're responding to everything, so thank you. And that's all I have, so I will move to our comments by administration.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of give a shout out to all the folks who are participating on the Bond Advisory Committee. We've been meeting pretty consistently and many members of my team, in addition to all the other things we have going on, have been there to explain projects and discuss with committee members, answer their questions, also a load on public communications as well. And this Thursday, we will be meeting and it will actually be the committee's first attempt at building out a bond package using the matrix that PBK put together that you all saw a while back. And so it's been very exciting. People have spent a lot of time understanding tax rate, understanding facility assessments, understanding individual projects. And now it will be the authentic learning and project-based learning experience of actually building out a project plan and prioritization. As Mike continues to remind them, 2.2, or $1.2 billion worth of ideas, 2.2? Are you sure? No, 1.2, yeah. 1.2 billion dollars of ideas, $600 million of available not increase-your-taxes opportunities. So we will see how that conversation goes this Thursday and we'll continue to have, answer their questions and work through the process with the goal of bringing a presentation to the board in January with a recommendation or information, however that looks, we're not sure yet, but bring that back to all of you for your consideration. In addition to that, public communications, as well as community engagement, are working on mission and vision work, and they're going to be launching that out soon. So plenty of exciting things going on, but it is time for a break. I think we've been out in the schools a lot and it's been a great, it's been a great year and we're very, very thankful for, you know, everything from Jerry receiving last-minute notice of Martina McBride and a vegetable and fruit semi to, you know, the Mustangs out of Massachusetts and in Kingwood, an entire semi-load of stuff from them. So there has been just no end to the unique opportunities that have come our way and support from across the country. And I love what Dr. Landry said in the video, the one thing that we can and should do is to pay it forward. So thanks to everybody for all that.
For those who are not a part of the committee, the bond committee, is there a way for them to be engaged and know?
We post absolutely everything, from the videos of every session, to the individual project videos, to everything we have on the Bond Advisory Committee online on our website. So if people are not able to attend, we make all of that available to them.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention when we were talking about the playoffs and all that good stuff, one thing I failed to mention is that this past weekend, the, we had representation at the state cross-country meet from Kingwood High School, Cape Park, Atascosa, and Summer Creek as well. So can't forget those folks. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Absolutely. All right, that brings us to item four, our consent agenda. So we will roll through these items as a way of just being more efficient. Oh, did I? Oh, I did, I skipped. Thank you. We definitely want the update on our board associations and committees, beginning with our audit committee. Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, Madam President, the audit committee, board members, you have received a copy of this month's audit report. Any questions, please see any audit committee member or Ms. Fashan. Also, yesterday, and I'll take this opportunity to let my committee members jump in if they want, we also were privileged to review the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And all I will say is that to Mr. Seale, Ms. Schultz, your team, appreciate all the work that you guys did and working with the external auditors. Very good report. And we just continue to keep up the good work that you guys do. Carney, anything you'd like to add? Ms. Dixon?
I would just like to say impressive work. I was very impressed. Thank you.
Ms. Conrad? Madam President?
Caught a little...
That's the end of this report then.
Awesome. All right, then we'll move to our Board and Superintendent Evaluation Process and Goals Committee. Mr. Lopez? Our Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sidon?
Yeah, you all should have received a report from our last meeting. Our meetings have been, as you can imagine, very intense and somewhat long at times. But just to all hit the highlights, we're looking at the Elementary 29 location. We hope to bring it back for a vote at the December meeting. We're looking at three different property locations that we already own. And what we asked as a committee and Dr. Fagan was looking at not just the pass of numbers, but looking at school building utilization so we can make the best decision possible because, as you know, we only have money left for one more elementary school before we go to the citizens for the bond referendum. Also, we had got an update from Joiner Architects on Middle School 9. In the past, we have had situations where some modifications have been made on facilities. And so what we asked going forward is that Mr. Correa and the architects sign off on any building modifications that could change the aesthetics or the usability of the facility. We're basically talking about is any value engineering, that type of thing. It needs to be signed off on going forward. We looked at, after the, since the hurricane, we've looked at different facilities that were damaged, that are built under the floodplain and so forth. So we've asked Mr. Correa and Mark Wimmerly, who handles our real estate purchases, to kind of look at some different land out there that could be used for different things. One piece of property, we deemed it was just not necessary. It was not in a bad, it was not in a good location, wasn't really usable. Another piece of property, we've asked them to do some more due diligence on that we can bring back to you later. It's not something that we'd be interested in right this minute. We also discussed the Kingwood High School options, and I won't go into that because we'll have that presentation here in a few minutes. And also, you'll see agenda items regarding the Welcome Center as well and the ISC. And the last update was the Kingwood Ag Barn. It's currently operational. However, it will need to be rebuilt. And but there's a potential that we're looking for other pieces of property that we can move it to because even if we rebuild that, it's still below floodplain. If we build it up out of floodplain, the road getting to it is still in the floodplain. So that hints the conversation of looking at some property that we could be a multi-use type property to the district. So if you have any other questions, feel free to let me know.
The, the location of the next elementary school, you said would probably be broad as recommendation next month?
Yes.
Do you anticipate us receiving?
Yes, absolutely. So what we asked, we had data and we've asked for a couple more columns of data and we're waiting to get that back so we can reevaluate. Ms. Atwood's team is working on that. Is it done?
It's done.
Okay, perfect. Soon as the committee can review it, and the committee is Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Dixon and myself, then we'll get it out to the rest of the board for review. And that, go ahead.
Can I add something to that? So we use a kind of a newer approach where we're using building utilization or operational capacity as well as as-built capacity and then looking at projections and seeing how many students will fit in any given building in what years and then totaling up the additional seats necessary in a particular sort of feeder pattern, if you will. So I think the new report will give you a lot of information to consider.
Fantastic. Any other? Education Foundation, Mr. Carney?
Sure. At the last meeting, I made a point to mention the golf committee. So the Education Foundation puts on an annual golf tournament to raise funds for, you know, for grants and other purposes. Mentioned at the last meeting that the golf tournament has been postponed this year. However, we mentioned specifically that there were certain sponsors that regardless of the fact that there wasn't a golf tournament, we're still coming forward and supporting the mission of the foundation. So once again, we really appreciate their efforts. There's been a couple of additional sponsors that have come forward since the last meeting, so I wanted to specifically mention them. And that's Edge Newity, Joiner Architects, Stan Tech, and Fluger Associates Architects as well. So on behalf of the Education Foundation, we appreciate your continued support. It's because of your generous donations that we're able to do what we do, so thank you.
Thank you. Back to Finance Committee, Mr. Sidon?
No report. Our next meeting is the last Tuesday of this month.
Noting that for myself. Thank you. And next is Kingwood Super Neighbourhood, Ms. Dixon?
Well, a lot of things were covered at that particular meeting, but I want to highlight just a few points. One, a lot of businesses are coming back up and they're running in Kingwood. They're placing signs along the main Thor Affair so let people know that they're open. There was some concern that that was part of the city easement, so they, people have been pulling, the city has been pulling the signs. So I think that they're going to work that out so that those signs can stay there so when they open, people will know about it. Our sister institution, Lone Star College Kingwood, lost 80% of their campus, so they're having a lot of classes online. And I bring that up to say that, you know, we're all in this together. I mean, it's been a tough process, but we're getting through it the best we can. And then if you, I guess if you see any potholes in Kingwood area, you can dial 311 and the city will come out apparently and take care of those. And last, this was news for me, maybe some people already knew about it, but the city has plans to widen Hamlin Road to four lanes, which will connect Hamlin to McClelland Road with access to 59 to help with some of the traffic. And that's it. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. One other?
The next meeting for the Kingwood Area Super Neighbourhood Council is tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Right, we know where you'll be. All right, do we have a legislative update, Ms. Morrison?
No report this evening.
No report? All right. And now, we can go on to our consent agenda. Note any items we'd like to pull, beginning with 4A, tax refunds. 4B, HCAD Board of Directors. 4C, budgetary transfers and resolution for commitments of fund balance. 4D, insurance and FEMA claims consulting services. 4E, goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. 4F, construction and construction-related purchases. 4G, the CAFR. 4H, transfer of the construction budget from Elementary Number 30 to Elementary Number 29. 4I, consideration of construction services for the Welcome Center.
All done.
4J, Summer 2018 Projects Architect Selection. And 4K, Kingwood High School, ISC, Harvey, HVAC Equipment Restoration and Replacement. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
We have to, you have to give me a motion.
I was going to. Madam President, as the consent agenda, I move that the board approve the following items by consent. Items 4A. 4A, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, 4G, 4H, 4J, and 4K.
All right, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? All right, so that brings us back up to item 4B. Harris County Board of Directors' election. Do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. And you have discussion? I know the answer to this. From my research, it was only those that are listed on that document, that resolution is who's on the ballot, and he was the only one on the ballot. Is there another running? Wouldn't they be on that ballot?
Well, that's what I want to make sure, can I cut in real quick? That's what I want to make sure because for the last, at least over a month, I've been getting information from Mr. Scott. I was aware that Mr. Pate is also running. Mr. Pate is also working with us on Go Public. He is also, I believe, an assistant superintendent for Deer Park ISD, lives in Baytown. Mr. Scott is on the school board for Katy ISD, and he also serves with me on the Tasby Board. And so if an information was sent, I'm just wanting to make sure that if he pulled out, the information that I have says that he didn't, so I'm just wanting to know.
There's only one name listed on the ballot, so...
That's good. That's all I want to know, Dr. Fagan, so.
The reason why I ask is we have this email dated October 17th that was sent to us by Mr. Scott, great Scott. And he's basically says that he's running, so I guess he's not.
His name's not on the ballot, so it seems like he's not. But I've never heard of him or that he's running.
I've never heard of Pete Pate.
Says Pete Pate was the only person nominated for the board position representing school districts other than Houston ISD and the Genocidal District.
How do you get nominated?
Well...
I don't ever remember voting for this.
No, we voted for it in the past, but normally Houston ISD has actually just allocated a slot on the appraisal. And then the rest of the districts, they have to kind of go ahead and run for it or vote for it and nominate.
I do remember, somebody came here that one time and spoke to us about it.
Yeah.
It's kind of like we had to do the resolution for your nomination as well, for your Board of Directors, right?
But this is different. We're voting for this person to represent our interests.
On the appraisal.
On the appraisal district, which is kind of a big deal, especially with the flooding stuff going on. So we want to make sure our residents in our area are protected. And so I don't know this Pete Pate fellow, but if he's the only person...
Well, that was my interpretation, was he's the only person nominated for the, for that position representing school districts other than Houston ISD. So maybe the Scott person is also running but for a different position.
No, he was running against Mr. Pate because Houston ISD has a seat at the table. They're given a seat. But if he's not on there, so maybe he pulled out. That I don't know.
Is there any other discussion?
Do we need to vote? I mean, if he's going to get it regardless... Do we need to vote? I mean, if he's going to get it regardless, I don't know.
I think we have to adopt a resolution. So then the, uh, the motion is to adopt the resolution.
Now, I can understand how Mr. Pate may get upset if we don't adopt a resolution. So we'd want to make sure that he represents our interests and not to upset him. So I'm fine with it if he's, if we've got to vote for him.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. Those in favor? Unanimous? Those opposed?
Just one.
Just one. All right, that brings us to item three, four, I, consideration of construction services for the Welcome Center. You have a motion?
He's the only person.
I need a motion for consideration of construction services for the Welcome Center?
Yeah, and second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
We're on the I, Madam President?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just wanting to, uh, I was looking at the Welcome Center here and I was looking at the, uh, the bid cost here. And I saw that we had a, uh, a real high cost. And then we've got, uh, a cost from, from a, some folks that we've already, are already using. So I was just wondering, uh, the folks that we're recommending, have we, have they done any work here in the district, Dr. Fagan?
I would like to invite Rick, are you, are you prepared to answer that question? Rick Bland, PBK Architects, is working with us on the Welcome Center and also on this particular project, so.
I'm sorry, I was shaking my head.
Oh, sorry. You've, you've been with us.
So they, they have not.
Okay.
This is a question.
Okay. Well.
Can I expand on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they are, they are a firm that specializes in, uh, commercial construction, commercial high-rise construction. They actually have a, a large portfolio of high-rise interior renovation and brand-new construction of high-rises. Now, I realize this is not a high-rise, but this is their, uh, the strongest building type in their portfolio, which is commercial construction and interior build-out of commercial construction.
Okay. Well, I, I happen to live right in the neighborhood, so it is a high-rise. It's tall. But that's, 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 that's.
It is a high-rise to me also.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, well, and, and so, you know, I had been hearing some things. We've, we've, we've had this before, you know, where, you know, you tend to get a call or an email thinking, you know, all right, I'm being, I'm being penalized. And I just wanted to just be assured that, uh, nobody's being penalized. Past mistakes that have happened are not attributed to this particular vendor. And if I just may speak so just candidly, bluntly, you know, uh, the issues that we had at our last project, I, I put all the blame on the owner and the developer. And then there's, there was issues with Center Point Energy that I would put blame on them also. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're not penalizing anybody from the, from the comments that I had gotten.
Yes, sir. Understood.
I just wanted to make sure.
There is a full evaluation of many, many criteria. So one is the cost, which is what you, you've referenced. One is also your past experience. One is also your experience with the building type and your goods and services. So it was a full evaluation period and then also interviews. So there was a short list of, of three contractors that were interviewed as well. And there's a cumulative score of all of those components and all that, all the criteria that went into play.
Okay, well, Mr. Sutton, being the chair, were you involved in those, uh, interviews?
Yes, sir. I, I was a non-voting member of the, of the committee, but I did sit in on, on all three interviews that day. And I would, uh, well, I'm going to vote here in a minute, so. But yes, I was, I was there. And it was, it was a good process to go through.
I'm just shocked that Paul Davis Restoration of North Houston didn't get it. Just so the joke there is that their, their bid was ridiculously high, and so. Like crazy, insanely high.
They were not interviewed.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All right, those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? All right. That brings us to our item five A, action items. We have our action items from closed session.
Yes, Madam President, as to the acts, action items, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Unanimous? And item B?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I move that the board approve the minutes for the regular board meeting held on October tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor? Unanimous? And that brings us to item five C, Kingwood High School Restorations, Phase Two. I'll turn it over to the administration.
Thank you. We've got to get our PowerPoint going here. So as you all know, this has been a very fast-moving process since we learned that Kingwood High School was sitting in a bit of a lake, like you can see in the picture up there. From determining the situation to finding a place for almost twenty-eight hundred students, their teachers and staff, to the transportation routing, et cetera, and then finally getting into Kingwood High School and, and figuring out what was possible from there. It's been a very challenging, long, and a fast-paced road. And so tonight, we wanted to bring everyone up to date with our progress on this project and the options that we looked into and where we would like to go. So this was our timeline review. I won't go through all the details, but you all remember all of these things that we did have, the flooding began, the district team convened on a Wednesday at our EOC and gave ourselves approximately two days to create a plan for the district and create a separate plan for Kingwood High School. And a Kingwood High School team came together. And while everyone else worked on resuming school at all of our other facilities, that team looked at all of the possibilities for where Kingwood High School could remain Kingwood High School and preserve the culture, the tradition, the excellence, all of the things that we've known and love about our school. We came back together on September first, which was a Friday evening, and the next morning launched the survey to families. We got great feedback and actually that feedback generated a third schedule, which is the one we implemented. And then Kingwood and Summer Creek started school on September eleventh as the Bullstangs that we know today. So, and the rest of the district started on September seventh. And then from there, Blackman-Mooring was onsite at KHS for the first forty-five days. From the beginning, they told us that we were going to have to have forty-five days of drying, which felt really long to everybody. But as I've said before, forty-five days is forty-five days. And they took out an exceptional amount of water from Kingwood High School. And those of us that were in there pulling out uniforms understand the condition of that building at that point. At, about September ninth, our insurance adjuster talked with us and said they were predicting between thirty and forty-five million dollars to restore and repair Kingwood High School, about six million dollars for the Welcome Center and about ten million dollars for the ISD building, and then another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the agriculture barns that Mr. Sutton rec, uh, referenced earlier. Finally, on October thirteenth, the environmental tests gave us parts of the building of Kingwood High School the opportunity to move forward. So that's the way it works. It's not an all, it's not five hundred thousand square feet. There you go. It's, you can have this section and they, they zip the plastic up and that part can move forward and then we work on the next section. And so it is, it's a little bit of a process, but that's, that's important to understand. Then, a few days later, once we had facility sources in there and moved forward with them and with PBK, we got a new number that was not an estimate, was their do-not-exceed number, which was just short of fifty-three million dollars. An important piece of information here is it's fifty-three million dollars for reconstruction. That's on top of the ten and a half million dollars that we paid to have the building dried out and cleaned and remediated. So what you're really talking about here is about seventy-three million dollars. So, or no, sixty-three million dollars, because I, I was a science teacher, yeah. Hope none of my professors were seeing that. But in any case, you know, a significantly higher number than that original number we were given of thirty to forty-five million. And so this is a quickly moving process and it, new information constantly coming to us. And so we were doing due diligence on this process all the way, but once you get to a number like seventy-three million dollars, you really take a, a deeper look and another step forward in this process, even though people are exhausted and everybody wants to, you know, return to Kingwood High School and all that. But we wanted to make sure that we were doing the very best possible thing for the students and staff of Kingwood High School as well as our community and taxpayers. So we engaged in a really thorough due diligence process and presented that information to our board planning committee, construction and planning committee, and gave them all this information that I'd like to share with you this evening. So here were the options we looked at, and we made up these names, but, but they've become sort of the way we talk about it. So option one was a straight putback. That's just put it back as fast as you can, exactly as it was. Option one A was really a, a straight putback, but with some modifications, and I'll explain that in a minute. Option two is a new Level One. I'll show a, a slide that will give you an idea of what those Level One areas are. And they are the, they were the most heavily flooded areas at Kingwood High School. And then option three was an all-new Kingwood High School, literally taking the Summer Creek plan, building it on the, the athletic fields, using Kingwood High School as best we could, demolishing that, moving the students over, and then building new fields. And you can imagine that was a complicated process, but, so option one is the straight putback. And so this is just an aerial view of Kingwood High School as we, as we knew it before Harvey. And the idea being that we wanted to get us back to this exact same building, exact same situation. Some of the challenges, well, one of the, the positives about that idea are that it is, it is fast, I mean fastest, and it's obviously least expensive, and it does bring athletics and fine arts onsite, which is a challenge in some of these other options, which is why it's on here. And then, but the cons is that, that include that it provides no flood mitigation whatsoever. So we're basically agreeing that we all know that part of Kingwood High School is built below the floodplain and that we're going to spend the money, but we're not going to actually change that. And then the other thing is that the Kingwood students have been at Summer Creek High School, which is our newest high school, and so they will be returning to Kingwood High School, and this wouldn't have much of a feeling. I mean, there'd be new paint and new flooring, but it wouldn't have that, that brand-new feeling that they've experienced at Summer Creek High School. So just some conversation that we've had. This one A option is similar, but takes care of some of those con parts of the conversation. So this adds a, a couple enhancements that helps with flood mitigation on two different areas. One is, on the left side, you see the, the fences around our athletic facilities at Kingwood High School became dams during the flood and gathered up all of the debris and various other things during the flooding and really made the fields very unusable. And on the right, you see the competition gym at Kingwood High School as we now know it, right now, that is built below the floodplain and was grandfathered forward in nineteen ninety-four when we did the renovations there. So these are two things that we want, wanted to offer as improvements. So put the school back as we know it, but mitigate some of the future flooding opportunities by building a new competition gym that is above the floodplain, maintaining the old gym as a practice gym, because one of the items that the bond committee is considering are third gyms at all of our high schools. So this would just be having those three gyms, but rearranging them, so the competition gym is not below the floodplain. And also having the turf for fine arts and athletics as we work our way back to having full usability of the school. This would provide an opportunity for marching band and ROTC and all the athletic programs to use the football field a lot and not destroy the grass. And some people say, well, who cares if you destroy the grass, but it's actually a safety issue if it becomes hard ground and dirt. So this would allow for a lot more practice space during this challenging sort of construction time. So option one A is just as fast as option one. It still gets our students back on the same timeline, timeline. It does provide a new competition gym above the floodplain, turf for the fine arts and athletics so that they will have space when they return and going forward and keeping those programs onsite. And the con is that it's some flood mitigation, but we all understand that it's not all, right? Okay, option two is a new Level One. So this is very difficult to see, I know. But the areas that are kind of in color on this map, you will see the locker rooms, the fine arts, the gym, the, the natatorium, the auditorium, the fine arts area, the admin, and the special education areas. Those are all the Level One areas that were the most flooded during Harvey. And so this option would, would demolish those areas and rebuild them above the floodplain and attempt to mitigate future flood, flooding. Some of the challenges of this, there are pros, obviously. Above the floodplain is good. It's equally fast because we would move the students back in the academic wing and they would have that sense of a new building because all of those, what I've now learned are the most expensive areas of a school are, would be new. So your natatorium, your auditorium, your gymnasiums, those are all some of the most expensive per square foot areas in a high school, and those are all the areas that we were challenged with. The cons of this are it's, it's very expensive. It's a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And we were talking earlier about seventy-three million dollars, but remember, ten and a half of that was spent with Blackman-Mooring just to get the, the yuck out. So that's not available. So you're talking about a delta between a hundred and thirty-five million total cost and sixty-three million dollars that we actually would have available. That's a pretty significant difference. This would displace athletics and fine arts, meaning they would be bussed for about twenty months to all their gyms and, because we would be demolishing those areas so that we could rebuild them. And so they would continue to have to bu, bust to all those practices, which would require us to maintain a shortened schedule throughout the day. Because in order to do all of that, you have to have ample time for athletics and fine arts to be before and after school like we're doing right now at Summer Creek, and you wouldn't be able to go back to that full academic day. The other thing about this is if we were reliant on bond dollars to do it, and we would be, and if those bond dollars did not become available, it would delay the reconstruction of the school back to option one, six months, because we wouldn't know until that happened. And the other thing here, which is, is rather minor, but something worth noting, is that there would be absolutely no parking in this scenario. Maybe some for staff, but when you have a construction site and you have all of that stuff going on in the front, detention underground would also, another minor issue, but maybe not, all the trees in the front where the, the students eat at the picnic tables, those would all have to go away because we would have to do underground detention and then ultimately parking and things there. So quite a list of cons on that particular option, but something that we wanted to consider. So that, I mean, it does meet two of the criteria. One, flood mitigation, and two, the sense of a new building like Summer Creek High School. Option three is an all-new KHS, so Public Communications even photoshopped this so that you have Summer Creek with KHS on it. And this is what that would look like. We would, students would return to the academic wing and use the old building as it is, sort of. And we would build a brand-new Summer Creek on, well, you can see where it is. It's the blue. On the rest of the site, one of the challenges of this is that the lowest area and worst flooding part is that far side where the athletic fields are. So it would have to be built up a lot, which is part of this cost that you see down here, two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, which would be over a third of the bond available dollars. And this is a very long process, as you might imagine, as you have to phase this all in and out and a big challenge for the school. So it, it would be a new school. We would have flood mitigation, but it's extraordinarily expensive. It would displace the programs for multiple years again. We would have to bust to other facilities. And the, the continued disruption at the school would be until, I think, the, oh, yeah, spring of two thousand twenty-one. So that would be our timeline for completing that project. So I talked about the estimated costs, but just to compare, the straight putback looks to be about sixty-seven point eight million plus the building contents. You know, because the cost to rebuild a building doesn't include cellos and things like that. So that's, that's something we all have to, to be aware of. The, the modified straight putback, you can, you can see the math there, is a seventy-seven point eight million dollar option plus the building contents. The bond committee is considering both a field, turf field and third gyms for all high schools. So that would be very normal throughout our, our system, we hope. And it's an, the KHS timeline's accelerated because the restoration is, is occurring right now. New Level One is a hundred and thirty-five million. That includes a, a cost for quite a number of portables that would be required to do that. These new science rooms are in that Level One area, so those would all be demolished. We'd have to have portable locker rooms, portable science rooms. There are some of the most expensive portables you buy, of course. And so these are some of the challenges of, of the new Level One option also. And then finally, that new KHS option is two hundred and twenty-seven million. So just a comparison. So just a comparison, we have another comparison coming. So this is a time and cost graph. So you can see the time that it would take to have sort of business as usual versus the cost on this particular graph, and gives you an idea of the challenges certainly associated with Options 2 and 3. Okay, you can't see this very well, but these are our current costs to date for each of these projects across the district. So you will see, that does not include the Welcome Center's reconstruction, only their remediation, which is why that number is lower. But you can see right now, we stand at about $79, almost $80 million due to Hurricane Harvey flooding and required remediation and reconstruction. And again, the Welcome Center's reconstruction piece is not up there yet. We haven't gotten that far, but we'll be bringing that to the board as soon as we have that information for you to review. Wanted to share, because over time, these numbers have gone up, and that's because initially they were estimates, and now we are actually getting the do not exceed numbers in, and we are getting the bills, and this is where they're coming in. So our recommendation that we presented to the Board of Building and Planning Committee was that Option 1A, is that we would like to encourage the bond committee to put a third gym and field turf for Kingwood High School into that bond. We'd like to move forward with those quickly. A competition gym above floodplain. We would, this will return our students and staff quickly by March 19th. It raises the gym above the floodplain, adds some new features to the school, keeps athletics and fine arts onsite, allows them to have a full schedule, and it minimizes the disruption to the community and the staff. So then, this was just, we were going to share this because we tweeted out, I tweeted out, I was a little ahead on this, but I wanted to be. So, we tweeted out, "KHS Welcome Home, March 19th," and wanted to share with you some of the reactions from students on the right to that tweet, you know, "Home before graduation, can't wait." "I know my kids are happy, this is amazing." I didn't put the ones up there that said, "I'm not going back to a full day." But you, good luck with that, Dr. Landry. So, I'll kind of pause, and we would be, Mr. Kramer, Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, Dr. Brown, Deputy Superintendent Nolan Correa, they are all here. Nolan is in charge of all things operations. He's Associate Superintendent for Support Services. And we are happy to answer any questions you have on the work we did around options for Kingwood High School and where we'd like to go.
Are you going to speak to FEMA and the putback?
So, I will say as much as I know, and then Mike can correct me or say the rest. But the way I understand our current situation is that insurance will pay up to their, what I call kind of stop-loss number, where they are maxed out. We have received some insurance payments, I believe $7 million was one check. We believe that the next 90% will come from FEMA, but we, we're working toward that, we're staying in compliance with that, that is what we're being told. And then, the state of Texas has said repeatedly that they plan to take $2 billion from the Rainy Day Fund, another $2 billion through a delayed payment, and then they would like to take that $4 billion and work to make districts whole. Because obviously, $80 million is not the end of our bill, and our, you know, our annual operating budget is at about $360 million. So imagine, in your budget for the entire year, taking out, you know, something short of a third, but still, that's a big number. So we are going through the process, we have a FEMA expert working with us, we have multiple layers of that, and making sure that we're in compliance so that it is insurance, and then FEMA, and then the state of Texas. But we, but Ida Schultz did share with us at the Audit Committee meeting that we are still getting payments from IC, so, and that was in 2008. So we're very hopeful that conversations with folks at the federal level will encourage those checks to flow a little quicker, given the enormity of the situation here. I testified at the House Education Committee on this topic with Representative Huberty, and I really expected us to be one of the, not one of the most impacted districts, and of the Houston-area districts, ours is the single largest dollar figure and impact of anyone, even Houston ISD, which had multiple elementary schools damaged. But our damage to Kingwood High School and the ISC far exceed that. So, in any case, that's the funding situation as we know it right now.
As a follow-up to, with the different options, if we do more than a putback, how does that affect the FEMA reimbursement?
Nothing is certain. I will say that they're challenging people to, they're creating the rules as they go. They will help with any mitigation that we do at a certain point. So if we looked at, for instance, if we had a solution where we could put back basically like we are, and spend another $10 million on some mitigation project, then, and I think it's fair to say that we are going to continue to look for ways to make that school less susceptible to flood. But when you go in and you add another gym, or you go in and you say, "We're going to raise the entire school by six feet," our fear is that FEMA, which is a program that might help you with that, is a very long drawn-out process, and we wouldn't have any confidence that that was going to end up in money coming that way. And I would expect them to say, you know, "For $30 million, you could have done this," which would avoid almost every flood that ever comes your way. Why do we want to help you with a $250 million operation? The other thing that I think is important, because we really need to nail this down, we would like to move forward with our plans for the competition gym, I think, and certainly with our plans for the turf. So what we would do is, we would ask the Board to do a resolution that authorized us to repay ourselves from bond proceeds if the bond passes. But if we're going to move forward with it before the vote is taken, then we have the risk that we will need to, I think that total expense is maybe $10 million we put in the effort, that we will be paying for that out of district reserves.
Mike, have you looked at the impact on fund balance on that, with that $10 million?
Mr. Sitton, I don't want to have to say it, because you can say it for me. But that is, that is something, I'd be happy if that, $10 million coming up to discuss that, but that's something that we can handle. And I think it's clearly in the best interest for that school to say, we talk about that school like the whole school is flooded over and over again, and that's just not the case. The gym is the most susceptible area of that. If we can move that out of the floodplain, then I think it's something that we're doing, it's the right thing to do, because then, if we have another flood, you're not shutting down the most important athletic facility on your campus.
Just so the rest of the board members know, as you know, we carry a 25% fund balance. I, for a long time, fought that. I thought we should only carry about a 20% fund balance. This is the exact reason why Mr. Steele recommended we move our fund balance. We were 21, 22, but he wants to, he really pushed for us to stay at 25 and sometimes even 26% for this very reason, you know, that if we had a catastrophic event, we would have some reserves and have some flexibility to do this. So, thank you to your entire team and the work y'all are doing with this. I know you've got, you've got folks that are working with FEMA on a regular basis, folks that are working with the insurance company on a regular basis, and outside of the daily operations of the district as well. So, thank you all for what you're doing, and Mike, thank you for your leadership on the finance end of this.
I didn't say I had to say anything. I need to express gratitude genuinely and my appreciation. I didn't create this funding. We're strong, we protected that money against other people, and so that enables to be a lot of support. The only thing I'll say, we're really coming back to the balance of the board, we don't know if there's cash flowing, $100 million for remediation for six months over a year. We will be, we will be kind of view of a limiting, a way to approach this, it's like a, sort of a version of a tax anticipation, although it's not unusual for school visitors. Because part of the reason for our big fund balance is there are times of the year when we don't have revenue coming in, we start to pay salaries and those things. So, it'll be kind of a line of credit that will enable us, if we do need to draw that $50 million for six months, we can borrow it.
I had one more, sorry. It wasn't in the packet materials, but I remember Mr. Correa mentioning, and maybe you before, about another mitigation was to build up those, is it HVAC systems or?
Yes.
Chillers?
In those chillers, in the schools as well. KHS will be raised.
As well as ISC?
Hmm?
Madam President, that was part of the, if you looked at Option 1A, said some, yeah, some flood mitigation, and then, I believe, the one right before, couple, one more. No, other way. No, go back. One more.
Is this an attempt to point out mine?
Well, anyway, there was, some of there said something about some modifications, some minor modifications, and then more flood mitigation.
Some enhancements.
Some enhancements, that was the words, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So some enhancements and flood mitigation, that included some of those things, items you're talking about.
Okay. Any more questions on Kingwood High School and the process we went through and the options we explored? We're good? Okay, we'd like to then give a brief update. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Correa, who is going to provide the board with a brief update on the ISC and the Welcome Center.
If you take a look at these pictures here, here's the ISC. If you take a look, and if you've been to the ISC building, you can see that building is raised by about three and a half feet, and we still took on 12 inches of water in that facility. On the exterior, we lost all of the chiller and the generator that were in the back. Those will need to be replaced, and everything on the first floor. Thank goodness, these conversations here were not as intense as the one at Kingwood High School. Currently, in this building, it's been cleaned, it's been tested, it's ready for putback. The timeline at this point is, we have three contractors who have bid on the scope of work that's been put out by PBK. We hope to get those bids by the end of the week and bring to the board that contractor and a timeline for when the ISC will be ready to be put back together. So we'll bring that in December. The Welcome Center, on the other hand, this building took on about anywhere between six to eight feet of water. This building has not been totally cleared yet. All of the electrical systems, the elevator, the mechanics were all underwater. We lost the storefront, the exterior building on the side. Everything's been taken down. One of the systems on this is it has an EFIS exterior system, that is a padded exterior system that was also soaked heavily by the floodwater, so it needs to be repaired. We currently have a scope of work for it. We're getting a bid on it to have it totally replaced. As soon as that's done, this building will be replaced and work will begin on it for construction. You approved that contractor earlier this evening, so they'll get to work starting with the timeline. For that building right there, we are looking to move in early in the summer so that we can start that building when we open school in August. And that timeline has not changed.
So any questions on Welcome Center or ISC, we're happy to answer. Otherwise, we would appreciate support on the recommendation for Kingwood High School to move forward with Option 1A.
I have a motion?
Madam President, as we look at Item 5C, I move that the Board approve the selection of facility sources as the contractor for the Kingwood High School Restoration Phase 2, and looking at Option 1A.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and second. All those in favor? All right, moving back to Item 5A, we have another item from closed session. We need a motion for?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the Board approve the administration's expulsion recommendation as presented in closed session.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Those in favor? unanimous. All right. Bringing us to Items 6A and B, information items available. If there's any questions, no presentation. All right? Those are available at any time. And with that, we'll move to adjournments. There are no objections. I move that we adjourn. The time is 8:41.